Good morning. We will call the meeting to order for September 3, 2013. First item is the approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried. There are no citizens to be heard. The next item is the approval of the minutes for August 20 and 27, 2013.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carried. Approval of bills and vouchers.
Will approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
The bills are paid. The next item is the approval of the Second Amendment to the Limited Joint Powers Agreement, Metro Flood Diversion Project. Brian? And we have that in our folder.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners.
Right.
I'm also going to pass around a request for a second motion in regards to this Second Amendment, and that would be for the funding, but we can deal with that. I just didn't want to do it right now. You have in front of you, and you have in your board packets, the Second Amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement with the flood diversion. And there was a summary on the front, and we can just review that for the sake of anyone that may be watching. There's not many changes to the agreement. There's a little bit of a change in the name, but the names are kind of interchangeable. Many refer to it as the Diversion Authority or the Metro Flood Diversion Authority is kind of the official name, but when they go back and go back and forth, it's the Fargo-Moorhead Diversion Authority or the FM Diversion Authority, and you'll see it referred to in the agreement to that effect. It clarifies the existing authority to of the of the the power of the authority, that would be a better way to put it, the diversion authority, and the refers to the fiscal year 2014 budget of $70 million. And of that, the Minnesota obligation is $190,000. And there, I think it's fair to say, Kevin, there's been an error. Commissioner Campbell, there's been an agreement between Minnesota and Clay County to split that $190,000.
Well, between Clay and Moorhead.
Between Clay and Moorhead.
Yes.
That's correct. Yes. And that's what the second motion is for today because it's not in. The agreement just refers to the $190,000. And then the dates of the joint power agreement.
Where does the other, the rest of the $70 million come from?
Mr. Chair, the, and I see Commissioner Campbell is on the Board of Authority, so maybe it would be proper for him to respond.
Well, yeah, the the remaining $70 million all comes from, there's there still is a there's a portion that comes from the Army Corps.
Corps.
That still has their funds into it. The state of North Dakota, Cass County, and the city of Fargo will pick up all the remaining dollars that are in that. Those are all dollars, the state dollars, of course, were approved in their last legislative session that authorized them to use some of those funds for the Oxbow-Hickson-Baki Project. And as well as then the remainder of that, those funds would come from the Cass and the city of Fargo sales taxes.
Because it's certainly not a 10%.
No, no. And and, you know, we, because the 10% number, John, as we all know, was a was a number originally talked about as a target point. But, you know, the city of Moorhead and Clay County talking about our need to have the Minnesota's share covered by the state, and until that would happen, the 190 is our maximum amount that we would pay.
And, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, also, within this Second Amendment, there is an understanding, a clear understanding, that the funding for the Minnesota side, if approved by the Congress, will come from the state and not from the local entities within this agreement. So there.
It's actually, it's actually better language for Minnesota, for Moorhead and Clay County in terms of protecting for us to, you know, if the state of Minnesota were decided that they're not going to pay anything, Clay County and the city of Moorhead will not be liable.
That's right.
This is the maximum that would be?
That's the maximum.
That is correct.
And that's been reviewed by our attorneys, the city of Moorhead attorneys.
Yes.
Anything else on this item?
Not on this item.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I, just to follow up on that, too. Part of this amendment then also does incorporate the JPA as a third member of the sponsor.
The sponsor. There you go.
It's a, becomes a third sponsoring agency. And I got a, I got a call from a member of the watershed district, and there was some concerns about that moving forward right now because of the dollars involved. And I know there's a meeting going to be on September 9 with the watershed. And I was asked to be there, and I have a conflict, but I was hoping maybe either you or Grant could maybe go to that. But I think one of their, one of their key issues or one of the key concerns that I heard about is they were worried about the potential for a financial commitment on the part of the watershed. And I, you know, I think we just need to assure the Buffalo Red Watershed District that this puts no financial burden on them whatsoever. And it would, I would think it would be in their best interest to be part of it as opposed to not be at the table. You know, so I just want to bring that up, Chairman, because I know I had gotten a call on it. And then maybe I can talk more with you and and Grant about possibly going to that meeting.
Sure.
Grant, do you have anything to add on this issue?
No.
Well, and, and, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell brings up a good point because I did have a conversation on last Friday or Thursday to Bruce Albright, the administrator of the Buffalo Red Watershed. And when I mentioned the 190 would be split between Clay County and Moorhead, he said, oh, well, he said, I'm glad that's resolved because that was a question on our board, too. So they have been asking questions about the financing, so that's good.
Gentlemen, your wishes on this?
Well, I would, I would move that we approve the Second Amendment to the limited JPA.
Second.
Discussion. John?
I have, you know, because of the limitations of the amount, I will vote for this, but I certainly have had some questions as to whether or not we should be continuing to to obligate these kinds of mass dollars, $70 million for a project that many, many think will not happen at this point. We had a lot of hurdles to go over, and we keep on spending some major monies. And it's, it's a questionable investment, I think, at this point. But I will, I will vote for it because likewise, I think it's, we're better off being a part of the discussion than to be, let someone else make all the decisions. But I really have some grave concerns about the amount of money that's being put into this thing and the likelihood of it happening at all.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Everett, I certainly appreciate your comments. I, I, I do believe that if you take a look at the $70 million that that is being, going to be spent, the whole idea behind whatever the diversion authority does approve and spend, it's meant to be a good dollar spent, whether or not the diversion is ultimately built or not. Because we're still incorporating flood protection measures. The vast majority of these dollars are going to be for the Oxbow-Hickson-Baki Project as well as the in-town levies that are going to be constructed. And all of these are in tandem with the diversion project. So it's not like $70 million is being thrown out the window here, so I just.
Yeah, I appreciate the, you know, what's being spent for Oxbow and so on, but a big portion of this must also be for continued planning.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Further discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. The next item that Brian has in front of us is to adopt a motion authorizing Clay County's share of $95,000 for the Metro Flood Diversion Authority.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chairman, I, I would like that, like it to be noted that that is, that is actually $50,000 less than we approved last year. And we had anticipated it being 150, right? We had anticipated, or 145.
145.
Yeah, 145. So I would, I would move that we cost share with the city of Moorhead on the Minnesota's share of $190,000, at 50% each.
Second. Discussion. John?
Does that mean that our budget is $50,000 better than we had projected?
Well, we've incorporated in the last budget.
It's already incorporated.
Yes.
I mean, just the last one, we talked about last week, had that in.
Okay. Further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This time, review the 2014 proposed budget and adopt the preliminary levy. Brian and First Lady. You're always welcome.
The, Mr. Chair, the first document I will pass out here is the expenses. And I'm not passing out the revenues by fund because we will refer to, we will refer to the revenues, but the revenues are really pretty much an issue in public health and social services. And I can report on those. I don't have a document on here. But what we did do is copy off the expenses, and we can go over those briefly. And I do have some additional information in regards to the, the two, two major funds that we were talking.
The next one, then? I'll read one more.
Oh, sorry. You good? Okay. Okay. We had given you an update on the expenses and revenue projections for the first six months here, a short time back. And what had been requested by the board was kind of the best guess, educated guess as to where we were for the time of the year right now. So this goes through August 28 of, of last week. We printed it off. And what they are is summary sheets on there. You can certainly go through them if you'd like. I have kind of referred to the page number. And the page number is at the top there. And, and then it shows kind of the present, a presentis, presentis? Percentages.
There we go.
Percentages that they're at for this time of the year. Trying to talk too fast here. And everything looks in good shape. I won't say really good shape, but they're in good shape, running with tracking within your approved expenditures for 2013 for the period of time. And it, it really depends upon when these expenses were posted, but they're within 2 or 3%, I would have to say. That's a fairly accurate statement. The only one on page two there, you'll see that, that Information Services is a little ahead. And he made two major purchases at the beginning of the year, and that'll even out as the year goes by. And that's what happens in some of these things. Now, corrections. In fact, I received an email, I think it was last week or the week before, from Julie that said that that day, there were 20 prisoners out. They've been running a little behind on, on out of county boarding, which was a good thing for the budget. But recently, she said, as typical at the fall, it's, it's taken a spike again. So she said that day, there were 20 out, which is getting to be quite a few. Gets to be expensive. Well, it's always expensive. But public safety is tracking well overall. General revenues are tracking well. Road and bridge, road and bridge is really difficult because with construction season and the big bills that they pay, that they come in later. Social services, and I know that is one of, of great interest. Last year, you approved in a budget, a budget of relying on $450,000 or allowing them to rely on $450,000 of reserve to, to make their budget, make their expenses over their revenues. And she is stating that they are tracking within that. In other words, they will not need to utilize the $450,000. So that is a very good thing. That's a lot of money. So, public health is tracking that they will use about $60,000. And that was the same that I reported about a month ago of the $250,000. So both those are very good reports for the year. A solid waste as well within the budgeted amount. Family service center is exceeding budgeted amount. However, this usually requires an interfund transfer at the end of the year. And you've been doing that for years and years and years. And when we talk about the budget, I'll, I'll mention it now. The expectations in 2014 is not to use an interfund transfer at the end of the year because the budget, we're budgeting the amount to cover those expenses. And it was a change with the payoff in their debt services over this last year, too. So I talked a little bit about that a couple different times. So overall, total expenses are falling within the authorized expenditures for, for the year, which is, is a good thing. That doesn't mean that it can't go a little south between now and the end of the year, but right now, it's tracking well. And I could tell from a couple of the commissioners, they, they felt that it would be right on that. And that's good.
I'm not surprised.
That's right. That's, well, we don't like surprises when it comes to budgets, so that's good. With that, I'll pass around another memo. This deals with the projected levy that we need for next year. And I know we have gone over this in pretty much detail in two or three discussions, but I thought maybe I should highlight some of the additional ones that just for, for bringing you up to date. On the memo, all adjustments have been made to the proposed preliminary levy. The new construction growth of 1% will be slightly affected as the new home builders rebate program was effective September 1 of 2012. So there will be that three or four months where there will be rebates for 2014. Now, Lori, we, Lori discussed this with Lori, and she's here. She doesn't feel that'll be a large payout because it's on homes only. It's not on the other commercials property, and she really doesn't.
I think it would be pretty minimal for housing starts after September 1.
So it was just for that four-month period, then?
Yeah.
So 2013 will show up in '15, then?
Yes. Yep.
That's the year.
The city did the full year, city of Moorhead, but the county started just that last year, so.
So it's 2015 where all the 1% could, you know, if it was all residential, we might not be able to use that as a, yeah, okay. Thank you, Lori.
And the other point, levy limits are in place for 2014. Lori has calculated our maximum levies, submitted the information to the Department of Revenue and proposed that levy does fall within our limits. The debt service of the county falls outside of the levy limits. And that's, frankly, our levy limit was the same levy as it was last year. So the only thing that's outside of the levy limit is the debt services. So, and as you can see, you, you come in with a proposed max levy of $25,151,531. Now, last year, when you set your budget, you did set it with the idea of allowing two departments, meaning social services, to utilize 450,000 of reserves and the public health used 250,000 of reserves. That is not, you're not allowing that this year, or that is not included in the budget. You're budgeting expenses, what's that?
Yet.
Yep. That's right. There you go. That's right. That's right. And so I just wanted to remind you of that, that, that last year, you did utilize that in your, your budget. Program aid was up this year of $527,000. Last year, it took a nosedive of $622,000. So it came back about $100,000 short of what it had been prior to that. So the levy increase is about $856,000, $856,985. Now, not that, I mean, I know you're well aware of it, but if you remember, in some of the new requests, that, and I, I kind of wanted to, just to summarize where we were at with the new requests. And you, the total, the new request totaled $281,000 within this budget. 10 of those, 10,000 of that was for the information services, 10,000 for technology services. $22,700 was for Department of Motor Vehicle, and that's to allow a half-time, or a full-time position halfway through the year. The big one that's within that $281,000 is corrections. And we do have a meeting set up with corrections to talk about that one position that is, is in this new request. It's one full-time position. But with the loss of six beds, they are projecting additional cost of about $172,000 to handle those new costs. Juvenile detention, made some changes to utilizing roster to full-time employees. That was about a $17,000 increase. And the new correctional facility, we've added $42,500 in to establish an account for a new correctional facility. And with that, one of the new requests, then we talked about this, was that Extension had asked for the funding of a half-time position. That is not in the new requests. Also, Buildings and Grounds had asked for a, one full-time position, and that is not in the new requests at this time. So that's kind of a summary of the new requests. And the others, we kind of went over the adjustments. But as Commissioners had pointed out, and I think Commissioner Wayland pointed out a couple times, is that these were, the reductions that we made were not cuts to current programs. They were reductions of increased requests.
Okay. So we need action on the preliminary levy today?
Yes, and there is a resolution in your, in your packet for the, the max levy.
Kevin, would you like to take a look at that? You're the money man.
What if I don't like it?
Well, there's somebody else.
It's a preliminary levy. I guess I don't have a problem with the preliminary levy. I would, I would move a preliminary levy.
I'll second it to the comment.
Discussion, please. John?
I'm really pleased with the way this has come out so far. We started, when we started, it looked really difficult. But things have come together. And, and the fact that the, this reserve that we had, had put up as possibly being used last year has not been used, that's a very good thing for, for our long-term position. So I, I think this is a good budget. I feel bad that we cannot do that extension position. But I think, other than that, we've done, we've done pretty well with. Now, my understanding is that the, the added need that, that maintenance has, we think can be handled through roster, the use of roster positions and so on. Because there is certainly some complaints about cleanliness and so on of the building.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. And I, and I do feel that some positions have been left vacant too long. And we're working with them on selecting people and also adding some roster positions because there's on some unused funds there in the, the salary line that need to be used before we ask for additional ones. And we're going to work very closely with them to get the people that they need. And then we can bring more accurate proposals to you.
Good.
Further discussion. Kevin?
And follow up to Commissioner Everett's comments, I, this is a preliminary levy. And, you know, the fact that we aren't using these, the reserves that we had planned for, and the fact that I still believe that we might be adding additional dollars to reserves by the time we're done, I think could still reopen a couple of these, these things as we move forward. You know, I am, I am really concerned about, you know, if you don't, if you don't maintain a building, small things lead to bigger things down the way. And so I'm concerned about that. And of course, we, you know, going back to Extension, we used to have that. I still think that if, if it led to more of our youth being served, we should, we could relook at that. But all of that, that's why I say we still need to see where we are with what actually transpired in 2013 to make some of those decisions. But as I, as I said before, I wasn't at all nervous about building in the potential of using our reserves to cover those two departments because, quite frankly, I didn't see it happening. Because history has shown over the last three or four years that, that we've had not one, but two, in some places, cases closer to $3 million in revenues over expenditures. And, and I haven't seen any trend that changes that either. So I just, I just.
Further discussion. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried.
Sorry, I got a little wordy there.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
Don't worry, Washington. I'd like to make a comment about the, the extension thing that we issued. The, I was at an Extension meeting last week in, in the cities, and Clay County was heavily featured, Clay County four-hits in presenting the, this aquatic robot demonstration. And they have just done so well with that. And I would like for us to ask them to come and report to, to our commission meeting. So if we can get that on the agenda sometime in the next month or two, then I think we could, we, we could address this whole issue again after, after having seen what they've, what they've done. It's a pretty powerful message.
At this time, we're going to go to some committee reports. And we'll start with the chief. Nothing. Frank? Kevin?
You know, I had a quiet week as well last week. I don't think I had any last week. No.
John?
We'll, we'll look here.
We had a highway tracking meeting.
Yeah, we did have highway tracking.
We had highway tracking after the.
Kevin, you want to cover that? We'll go back to you.
Well, we'll let John do it. He's.
John?
Let's, let's see here. Well, the highway, highway tracking was, was a significant meeting. And then that AMC meeting that I think, you know, Kevin can report on the highway tracking. The AMC meeting that I talked about, Extension meeting, was, was really significant, I think, in, in that Clay County four-hitch was highly recommended and praised for their, for their work. So I just wanted to highlight that and invite, and for us to give a formal invitation for them to come and report. It would be good. So.
Anything else, Jim?
No.
Yeah, going back to highway tracking meeting, there were about five items on the agenda for that day. But probably the most significant one was we've had a, a couple of business entities in rural Clay County that have shown some interest in wanting to cost share some, for some highway improvements. And we, we had some pretty lengthy discussion on that. And we certainly see the potential. on that, and we certainly see the potential of that as, as being something positive, when anytime you can get public-private working together on, on projects is always a good thing. But we, we still had a lot of questions, and we're going to be, we're going to be doing some further analysis of that through a highway tracking committee, and then probably ultimately bringing something before this board for consideration. And that, other than that, M.A., Brian, if you want to bring your report, if some of those other things you think are, quite frankly, I don't have my sheet, so I don't remember all of them.
And I, is that it, Kevin?
Yep.
I had no meetings this week. Brian, we're going to go to you, if that's okay at this time, for your report, just in case, there are some people who aren't here yet for employee recognition.
Sure, Mr. Chair. Yes, highway tracking, Kevin, or Commissioner Campbell covered the main topic that we talked about there. We had an extensive discussion about that, and I think it's something that going into the future is, is well worth considering. We also talked about some of the employee issues and filling the positions and, and the, the permits and the revenues that's been generated with the permits out there, and how we can offset the workload there, and, and the foreman position that is, is now vacant and being filled there, and how we look at the manpower there and supervisory. The foreman has seventeen people that he directly supervises, and that is an awful So, I'm trying to think of some of the other things, but that was the, the main thrust of it. I guess, Mr. Chair, did you want me to continue with my report?
Please. Employee recognition is on at eight-thirty-five, so please go ahead.
Okay. The, yourself, and you invited me along to the Morehead Business Association, and we made a presentation out there last Wednesday morning, I thought went over quite well, and, and the Chair has had some contact with me in regards to some information on funding and taxes and things like that. We've exchanged several emails in regards to that. We did have a diversion strategy meeting in regards to planning what comes next and the, the changes, and how we approach this thing, and, and address different topics, and we also had a, a meeting with Congressman Peterson from Minnesota in regards to that, so I'll follow up with some, some information on that to Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Whelan. So, with that, Mr. Chair, concludes mine.
Do you know if, do you know if there's anybody else showing up for employee recognition? We are a few minutes early. I'll tell you what, let's take about a four or five minute recess, just to make sure those who are, would like to be here on time are here. We'll call the meeting back to order at this time, and go to employee recognition.
We have several. We'll wait for John. I thought he was here.
We'll wait for Commissioner Campbell. Okay. We have someone with us today who has been with us for twenty-five years, Captain Ay, just a little part of the specialist, Auditor's Office. We play our hair dye at the same show. This is a specific appreciation presented in grateful recognition of twenty-five years of outstanding and dedicated service in Clay County and citizens. Captain?
Thank you.
Michael Ay, Sheriff Steckey.
Is he working?
Yes. Well, Michael, oh, Michael Stappin, this looks black white for us, and we know his parents very well, and if you could give this to him, and I'm not going to read this, they all say pretty much. He says, he's management aide, hotel for twenty years. So, you know the right word, just go.
Yes.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you.
And Brian Melton, our county attorney, fifteen years of service.
I thought Bill was stealing my flat.
Ross Olson, is Ross here?
Yes, he is.
Ross has been with us for fifteen years, landfill operator. And Ross, thank you for all you do, and we certainly appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Is Vicki here?
Nope. Slave driver.
She's been with us for fifteen years, and she could give up to her. Bill, are you the only one that doesn't do anything? If you mind, when you have a badge and a gun, you could be... Also, my son-in-law tells me he's a war replacement. Stacy Christensen.
Stacy's working too.
Please do our best, and nice to see you.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to comment, this is, this is why our county works so well. We've got long-term employees that know what they're doing, so it's...
Certainly do. Is Nancy still, Nancy, Howard, could you come up? Nancy Krenelka would like us to adopt a resolution classifying tax forfeiture list as non-conservation land. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you?
Great, how about yourself?
Good. And that's this item, second to the last one. You're on.
It's basically a formality. I need approval in order to carry on with the tax forfeit sale process. I've sent copies of each of the legal descriptions over to Kevin at Soil and Water, and he does a determination. Basically, we're determining if any of the properties are forested lands or wetlands. We generally don't have much of that in Clay County, but it still has to be addressed.
Chair, any comments or questions?
Just a question on this, this list, are these all up for this year then?
Yes.
When would that be? When is the auction...
December fifteenth, something like that, yeah. I believe the City of Morehead might be taking a bunch of properties again off of that list, but not sure yet.
And Nancy, other government entities have the option, if it falls within their jurisdiction, if it's for the public good, they can also do that, correct?
Correct.
I would need approval of the request.
Second, discussion.
It appears that most of them are in the, in incorporated areas. Couldn't find very many, maybe the one in more, one Morehead Township, but...
I think there's like two of them.
Everything else is in the corporate, right?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carry.
Thank you.
James Garten and Mark, is it pronounced Voel?
Box.
Box, okay. Clay County Economic Development Authority policies, clarification regarding it. Good morning, gentlemen. Eddie Rivers today. You're moving faster than a lot of us.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time to, to see us. In our course of normal events, you know, our, our business development program, you know, it's our goal this year to make a hundred-and-fifty business development calls in Cass and Clay County. And in the course of one of those calls, and working with one of the, the companies here in Clay County, Alderon, we and Mark had gone through some process about their expansion, and, and we had gotten some information, and then worked with staff, and I'll let kind of Mark go through the process. We're here a little bit to throw ourselves on the sword. Staff's done a great job. We, there was some misinterpretation on our part, but I think still in the end, there's still some questions that we'd like to resolve and bring up, some ideas that we have, especially in light of just recent events and what's going on in the marketplace. So, Mark, I'll let you.
Thank you, Jim, and, and thank you Commissioners for the opportunity to visit with you this morning. In the past, we have, when we've worked with Cass County and the city of Fargo and West Fargo, we use, and we talk about incentives, in particular property tax exemptions, for the community of West Fargo and the other two entities. We have developed and have implemented a scoring system to go through the merit of the project, or, or the company, or prospect requesting the incentive, and, and we don't get into, through the scoring system, we don't get into the financing of the project itself. It's based solely on the merit of the opportunity. Takes into consideration if they're a manufacturing company, for example, and what industry sector they're in, how many wages they will pay, how many jobs they will create, and it's, it's a point system where they'll get, if they're creating fifty jobs, they're going to get X number of points. If they're creating ten jobs, they'll get a lesser amount of points. With a target trying to, to be a score of one hundred, and I've got the outline that we use, and we would certainly be happy to work with the Economic Development Authority to, to implement a, a similar program for Clay County to, to use and to consider as they go through and, and review these exemptions. Again, this, this is a system that's used by West Fargo, Fargo, and Cass County. We would certainly be happy to modify any programs, or any part of this that Clay County would be interested in. For example, there may be parts or, or communities in Clay County that want to consider hotels and restaurants. Fargo and West Fargo in particular don't incentivize, they, they don't offer property tax exemptions to certain industry sectors. So, again, we'd be happy to work with, with the authority to adopt, and we would suggest that the authority consider using a point system based on the merit of the program, and steer away from the, the financial aspects if, if the project needs the exemption to be considered. We would suggest that the exemption shouldn't be part of the gap financing. Leave that to the banks and the financial partners, and, and judge a project based solely on the merit of the opportunity. And we would be happy, more than happy, to work with the authority to vet out the project. Anytime they get a request, whether it's primary sector or not, if they would like to help us go through the process and determine and evaluate and make a recommendation, we'd be happy to do that. So, I throw it open, any questions?
Yeah, thank you.
First thing, and I, I think you're, you're talking about, our current policy talks about, really the only way incentives can come through the form of property tax in Clay County is for the but-for financing part of it. We have had the same discussion with our, with our planning, and we recognized a while back that, that we should have further discussions about this to possibly open this up to not only be that if it weren't for, they couldn't afford it, that, you know, then they wouldn't come here, but how about doing it as an incentive to get them to come here? They're, they're two different things, and currently, our policy doesn't really deal so much with the incentive side of things to bring businesses here. And I think our board did talk about this, and we, we recognize that we should probably open this up for discussion, but the first thing we're going to need to change is our policy. And I think that we had talked about that, and I think it's in the works. I know our planning director is, is certainly supportive of us opening this up, and you bringing forward these ideas on ways to implement, I think is a really good thing. You guys, this is your business, right? And as far as bringing other businesses into communities, and, and I would hope that we would look to you for your, your expertise and knowledge in, in helping us frame the policy to meet what we would need, and I, you know, and I, I would look to your administrator to, to maybe get that ball rolling, because I, I do know that right, right now, we have no incentive for a business to come here when part of their process is, is they go to communities and they ask, oh, what can you offer us? And when we can't offer them anything, and, and other communities can, then, then we're behind the eight ball right, right at the very beginning.
John?
This, do I understand that it's, this is just West Fargo's policy here, that you handed to us?
It is the same policy for Fargo, and it might be some little minor, but we, we developed that for Fargo, West Fargo, and Cass County. So, there might be, as, as Mark said, some little changes for this or that, they might allow certain things that other ones don't, but the basic premise of that is exactly what the other entities...
Has Morehead looked at this?
Morehead has something actually even more aggressive than that.
Okay. You have a question for? Go ahead.
The other thing is, is it's not just about the attraction of new companies, it's, it's really about the expansion and retention of existing companies. I, I think that as we deal with, with businesses here in, in Clay County, and especially dealing with the city of Morehead and working in conjunction with them on, on businesses, as well as retention, as well as attraction, it's incumbent on us to have as many tools in the toolbox, if you will, as we possibly can, to offset some of those other issues. And I think that the most recent situation with PetroServe is a good example, with them moving over into Cass County. I think that, that this county and all the municipalities, and we're working with Barnesville and other communities as well, that we need to make sure that we're as competitive as, as possible, so we not only have the ability to attract, but more importantly, that we maintain and, and make sure that anybody that wants to do an investment and, and grow here, that's already here, has the ability to do it and is seeing the same benefits that they would see anywhere else in, in the region. I think that's the, that's the real underlying issue, is to ensure that kind of growth.
James, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I was just going to basically say the same thing that, that Jim did, that Clay County is a big part of who we are and what we do, and, and we want to make every opportunity available to be as competitive as possible, and, and attract, and more importantly, retain. Eighty-plus percent of economic development growth comes from within, so, you know, that's the primary focus, is, is the retention of what is here already, because that's much better than going out and getting somebody from Wisconsin to move to Clay County, Minnesota. What, what is here is, is much more stable, they're a known entity, and all of us, our organization, Clay County, whatever municipality would much rather do business and, and provide opportunities for the existing companies to continue to grow.
Thank you. Any further questions for these gentlemen?
It seems like this is something that we should refer to that Economic Development Committee to, to look at and bring back a recommendation. I think it's, it should be strongly considered.
Absolutely.
And I, Mr. Chairman, I think we should, when that committee meeting is held, we'll maybe invite either one or both of you, if you can attend, to help.
Absolutely.
Good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Appreciate you being here.
Looks like it worked pretty good.
Thank you.
You have to take the scenic route. Darla Lee and the mayor, and Commissioner Baki. Close to, okay.
There's room for you too, Les.
Come on, Les. Clay County Housing and Redevelopment Authority requests for levying to collect a special benefit tax for 2014 in the amount of $190,000. And we have the Director, Darla Lee, HRA Commissioner, Les Baki, and Chair, Neil Rowley. And this has to be acted on today. Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing us to come and speak with you as former, as members of the Clay County, former Clay County Mayor's Association, back about 30 years ago.
Thirty-five.
Our request today is in front of you. I'm not going to read it for you, because I'm sure you've gone over it yourself. Maybe one of the things we could do is highlight some of the things and then entertain any questions that you have. If you have your memos in front of you, our request this year is for a special benefit tax of $190,000. That was approved by the Board of, HRA Board of Commissioners in August, on August 20th. The tax would be levied in all of Clay County, except the cities of Morehead and Barnesville, of course, have their own housing authorities. The tax levy is not subject to the overall levy limits. What we're proposing, the maximum amount available is $458,718. The $190,000 that's been approved by the Board is 40% of that maximum levy available. And you'll see how it affects taxable market values in Clay County. That, page two is a history of the use of the levy in Clay County. We adopted a levy in 2008 and 2010. Last year, we rescinded our request simply because of the negative impact that it would have affected property owners with last year. In lieu of that, you did approve $25,000 in general funds to be used as leverage. I think that second paragraph is quite very relevant for our situation here, that for each dollar raised in property taxes, the HRA has been able to generate an additional $8 in funding from outside sources. As a result of the $200,000 generated by the HRA levy and the $25,000 in general funds, the HRA has been able to leverage an additional $1,844,000, $1,844,950. The majority of the levered funds are from the Community Development Block Grant Funds awarded through the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, or DED. And the most recent DED grant was awarded to the HRA in 2012. Again, next paragraph, since 2008, the HRA has worked closely with Clay County Social Services, with Lakes and Purries Community Action. I know you're all familiar with the group work camp, and then also working with the West Central Minnesota Community Action Programs, Weatherization. All of these programs have worked together very closely and collaboratively to be able to help particularly elderly citizens remain in their homes, but also families with disabilities and low-income families in Clay County. The proposed uses, as you see there, will be for rehabilitation of owner-occupied housing through the DED match and assistance to, also to the group work camp. Number two, support of ongoing successful housing programs. And three, pre-development costs for the investigation and creation of additional housing options for Clay County citizens. And then the money breaks out as follows at the bottom of that page. Page three really explains each of the areas that we're requesting that the levy dollars be used toward. Again, I don't think I'm going to go through anything more there unless you have specific I guess that's about what I'd like to give you in terms of the overall request, and then we'll open it up to questions from you four.
Dale, what would the ramifications be for the Housing Authority if this did not go through?
I think I'm going to refer that to Darla.
The first of all, thank you for allowing us to be here today, is the reputation and success with DED and the Community Development Block Grant Program. As you know, that was actually Clay County, who's the award recipient, or the administrator. And as we discussed a couple of years ago, and I know you've had a few other discussions since then, so I'll kind of remind you, that we knew we had to come up with a matching portion for that grant, which is why the Clay County Board originally levied in 2012. But that was the same year that all the changes were made in the property tax calculations. And it was a rough year on taxpayers, and we just didn't want to add to that at that point in time. And that is why the Commission agreed to appropriate some money from the general funds in order just to get the application approved. At that point in time, we said, well, we may have to come back, but we'll search for other resources in the meantime, which we have done. We've brought in about $100,000 also during that time period for the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency for rehab on Clay County homes. But we're at a point now where our homeowners that we're currently working with, we have five folks, who the bids are in, the contractors are selected, the DED money's in place, and they each need a $7,500 match, and they have gone to all the banks, they've looked into the low-income programs, and they are not fitting into categories. And so, we are seeing that need, and we have taken every angle that we can determine to try and fill it. We haven't applied, did I, you know, about this application to rural development for a potential $23,000, but just to try and get those resources into the hands of those homeowners. So, that's the primary reason we're coming back. Also, when I was listening to the last conversation that you were having on economic development in the county, one of the issues that comes up is where are folks going to live? We're looking at the Holly area right now that is creating a number of new jobs, and if you look at the housing market in Holly for what's affordable, it's tough. We have a couple of public housing units out there. We just put "for rent" signs up, and I think we've gotten eight calls in the first week for families who are looking for housing there. And the lots that are available to develop in Holly, you need to be able to qualify for a pretty high mortgage in order to live there. So, we've been looking at that, and last year, we wanted to go in and do a tax credit development that's really targeted at 80% of area median, about $50-some thousand, to help those folks establish homes in Clay County and start to consider Clay County as their home base for when they may move into, to move up into other homes, instead of what we've been seeing, are folks moving across the river to find more affordable housing. So, I could go on and on and on.
Thank you.
But what was the levy in 2008 and 2010?
It was $100,000 each year.
$100,000 each year.
And I believe in '08, and Laurie is the expert, I am not at all, but I believe that the cap net max that, at that point, was about $250,000.
Yeah, I'm not.
I think it was $258, is what I'm thinking.
And then, what do, I still, maybe it's me, but pre-development costs for the investigation and creation, what does that mean?
That's what I was talking about as far as developing additional housing options in Clay County. Last year, we literally were in the position to submit an application that I think would have been very competitive to do 40 units in town. But to do that, you have to secure land, you have to secure architectural fees, and we, our primary source of funding is federal. We were hit pretty hard by sequestration. And at that point, we determined we could not take the risk to do new programs when we weren't sure that we could keep our current programs going. On a national level, what we're hearing is you got to do what you need to do to survive until we can see what happens with sequestration, and we've been surviving. But you'll see in our Housing Choice Voucher Program, which typically brings in $1.6 to $1.8 million to landlords in Clay County every year and supports 360 households a month, I said we'd be able to support 330 for September, we're down to 327. So, there's 33 households in Clay County today that aren't getting help, that we could be helping. And the reality is, if we're able to put some local investment into that, then the following year, the feds look at how much did you spend in the previous year, and that's what they base their future funding on, so that if we can support that with some local dollars, we can once again generate additional dollars coming into Clay County.
So, a lot of this request is based on sequestration, then?
You'll see, 50,000 of it is. We were impacted by about $150,000 this year due to the sequestration, but it's more than that in that that revenue will generate additional revenue from other sources. That's one of the premises behind what we've done in the past and what we hopefully will always do, is that any investment made by a taxpayer in Clay County will come back with a return. I can't always promise 820% returns, but that these are investments being made in our community.
Further questions?
Yeah, and I go to, I want to go to the two items here that I'm going to tell you, just like I tell everybody else within our county who deals with the federal government and state government in terms of funding. I have a real concern about us being the Band-Aid for losses from the state and federal government, because it then goes to property tax, which to me is as regressive as you can get. And I don't, you know, the sequestration thing really bothers me. I got a son-in-law who's, works for the government, and the sequestration cost him 20% of his pay. But yet, we would ask then that he turn around and have his property taxes increased on top of his 20% pay reduction from his sequestration. So, this affects many other people as well, and I just don't know how long we can continue to take a look at what are the responsibilities of other forms of government passed on, and because they will no longer do it, that we should. And then if we don't, we're made to feel and look like the bad guys for not doing it, and that really, really bothers me. And clearly, within your two topics here in terms of the operations and the development for new housing, if, you know, you're saying here, if it wasn't for the sequestration, because those were lost dollars to you, there was 50,000 in operations, and you're only asking for 50 of the 150 you lost on the development for new housing opportunities. And that is still $100,000 that we're being asked to fund, that was funded by other agencies who probably have more responsibility in that area than what county property tax should. So, I'm struggling deeply with that, and I've shared that with our Health and Human Services and our social service departments, because the same things happen there, and we recognize that, I mean, what if you would have lost all your funding from the federal government? Does that mean that the county government should step in? I don't know how we can be the answer to everybody's, that's my concern, and I, so I'm, and the fact that this is just coming up, and you need a, you need an answer today?
Yes, yes.
And Mr. Chairman, our administrators also.
Right. And Mr. Chair, we went ahead with setting our maximum levy today because Commissioner Everett will be gone, and we wanted to include him in on it. I did check with Laurie, because I did respond to the chairman, that the levy, max levy would have to be set today, but that's, I'll clarify, only because Commissioner Everett is here. We do have until the 15th to set max levy.
Yeah, and I understand this falls outside the levy limits too, but that's not the issue here. The issue is it falls outside the levy limits, but it still shows up on the property tax statement as something, something new that our property tax people are going to have to pay.
But, getting back, does this have to be acted upon today?
Mr. Chair, no. It has to be acted upon by the 15th of September.
Okay, so it could be acted upon next week.
Yes, yes.
John?
Well, this is always a philosophical question that we wrestle with, as to how we deal with federal and state cuts. It's sometimes, I mean, on one hand, when you make them up locally, then it makes it look like you really didn't need it in the first place. And, you know, that message, we don't want Washington or St. Paul to get. On the other hand, if you don't do it, you've got, we've got probably 30 more homeless families in the county, and we have a responsibility there to care for our citizens there too. So, it's not an easy, easy question to deal with. Hopefully, the sequestration will finally be resolved. I don't know, and it gets less likely all the time, I suppose, but we would hope that some people in Washington would grow up and begin to act responsibly as soon as, as soon as that's possible. But I think, I mean, I will support the levy. I think that it's, that it's important that we, that we do all we can to keep people housed and that the rents are paid, but it isn't an easy philosophical question. It's really, you wonder what message we're sending to Washington when we do that.
Frank?
Do we have any, of all these people that we're helping here, I mean, you're saying that the bank didn't help, I mean, couldn't do it, it wouldn't approve it. Now, by giving them a little bit more money, that's going to get them approved. Do we have any figures in how many of these people follow, continue following through on the program? I mean, do they lose their houses or anything like that?
I'm happy to say in the history of the program, that we've, at least for what we've had in place since 2008, where the foreclosure spiked, we've had one foreclosure in our history. Everybody else has been able to maintain their housing successfully. We do quite a bit of work with the homeowners. Some of these folks would not have been able to stay in their homes.
Well, I realize that, that's what I'm trying to find out.
Too dilapidated. And then, and I know this has been an issue in the past for Commissioner Campbell, is that these funds now would be, are set up as recycling, they're revolving loan fund, so that when people move from their home or sell it, that the funds come back and can be reinvested in the community in another homeowner. We have not gotten that turnover because people have been staying in their homes, and so, we're happy with that, but if they were to leave their homes, they have to repay it. But we've had one loss in the history of programs.
Further comments?
Well, I, and again, I have supported the rehabilitation part of your program in the past, because I've recognized the importance in how you've been able to use those dollars to obtain many more dollars to, and to me, not only the part of rehabilitation that's there, is it also keeps communities looking good. So, I don't have any problem with that, that part of this. My heartburn lies is in this area that we're now being asked to subsidize the federal government, and I just struggle with that. And the operations, the operations end of it, I think, is the part that you're talking about. That 50,000 is to kind of offset for these 32 homes, because the development of new housing opportunities, that, that doesn't have anything to do with those.
Right, and we've had to keep other resources in place because we're unsure what the federal government is going to do. Is able to clarify that.
I just, I'm frustrated with this.
Anything else?
Not right now.
Okay. Would you like to act on this today, or would you like to wait until next week?
I'd like to discuss it further.
Today? Okay.
Right now, yes. The group work camp thing, you explained, my understanding is that you were, that you gave only 5,000 before, and so this is to help make up for our?
Yes, we were looking at the county's position, I knew with the, and now I'm not really clear exactly what the limits were in place for the county, but with the understanding that we were working at and that you guys were in a tight spot. And if these were county dollars, as you said, that show up on everybody's tax statement, we had no issue and would be happy to take over that responsibility if, as, because it's a housing activity that happens throughout. it's a housing activity that happens throughout the county. And so, what we talked about was taking over the county's portion as well as the HRA portion that has been issued in the past. But I'm sure that the Group Work Camp of the county would still choose to participate, could use those extra dollars as well. It's one of the areas where, you know, we've seen a great return. I share the Commissioner's heartburn on the federal and state resource issue. I just want to point out that we are one of the very few county housing authorities in this community that hasn't been lot, been levying for 20 to 30 years. Most county housing authorities have been supplementing those funds for the past couple of decades. Our agency has done whatever we can to avoid doing that. We earn our keep, and we have for the last 38 years, and it is always our intention to continue to do that in the future. But it's gotten to the point where we have had to join our brethren HRAs. We are government entities. Normally, government entities do rely on some tax dollars to operate and make this request. I, once again, I understand the frustration. I wish I weren't here. I'm sure our Commissioners wish that they weren't here. But we wouldn't be here if we didn't think it was a positive investment for the citizens of Clay County. And as John was saying, otherwise, it puts even more of a burden on the Social Services Departments as well.
John, anything else?
No.
Would you like to act on this today, gentlemen, or would you like to wait until next week?
Well, I would like to, if I can, to act on it next week. Unless there's some particular reason people want to do some more research or something.
I don't know, I don't know what more research can be done. You're either going to support it or you're not going to support it. Unless there was entertainment to remove parts of this out, I'm not going to support it. But the problem is, is I do support portions of it.
Do we have a motion?
I would move that we support the request as submitted.
Do you have a second?
I'll say.
Further discussion?
Well, I'm going to support it. I'm reluctant to support it for the same reasons that Commissioner Campbell indicated. And part of it is, I think, what Darla said, that the HRA here has a history of not, you know, looking for these kind of funds. But, you know, but, you know, for the future, I think, you know, what we discussed, I mean, it's going to be virtually impossible for us to make up all these funds that the state and the federal government are cutting people back. And of course, it's natural, everybody comes, you know, looking for, to continue funding at the levels that they've had in the past, and it's just going to be virtually impossible to do that. And so, you know, like I say, I'll reluctantly support this because of the, you know, the history. And I know that the HRA is doing what they can not to do this. But, you know, in the future, I would have a difficult time continuing to support trying to make up these funds, so.
Further discussion? Kevin? Or Brian? Oh, boy, Kevin, you go ahead.
I, you know, I am not going to support the motion, and I'm not going to support the motion because of the funding portions that are dealers with operations and the development part of this. And at some point in time, we can't just say, well, we'll live with it this time, but we're -- at some point in time, we have to just draw the line and say, we can no longer do this anymore. And we heard it a lot this year about federal dollars being bumped in a lot of the areas within our own county departments. And I would love to support the vast majority of your requesting here. And I don't have any problems with that. I think that's great. But I, for those other reasons, it's not anything with the HRA. My issue is with other entities of government who are failing in their responsibilities.
Brian?
Mr. Chair, for me, that was my question, too, in regards to the $50,000 operation.
Yes.
Is that perpetual, then, a possibility that if this has been eliminated and we pick up this $50,000, then next year, are we going to, or is the county levy going to have to pick up the operation of $50,000? And unless the federal government changes, and let's face it, folks, the federal government is spending 40 percent more than they're taking in. I don't think they're going to increase spending, you know? So I think it is going to fall on the county levy for operational purposes, and I think that's what Commissioner Campbell is asking me. And am I right on that?
Well, I wish I had the crystal ball that I could give you the perfect answer. I can tell you, though, when you're asking about this money for the development, we would love to once again be able to completely earn our keep. How we do that is by doing development and earning fees. We, in the last several years, have earned approximately $280,000 by doing development and earning fees. There's a risk involved with that, though. And so, part of the reason that's included in here is because, A, I do think it's economic development within the county, and B, because it is a way of us supplanting and finding other replacement funds. We're not naive. We have known for years that we are in a declining funding situation by the federal and state governments. And so, we are looking for creative ways and solutions to fill those gaps. Our creativity ran short this year. And, but I'm happy to report that we have an additional eight vouchers coming in from state funds to help homeless families that we were just awarded this past week, and we will continue to search for those opportunities. But I can't promise, because I don't have my crystal ball.
Thank you, Darla.
But is that a right, a fair assumption, though, that, I mean, these grants and DEDs matches, they're one-time dollars, but the operational ones are continuous, possibly continuous if you don't get the federal funding, if you want to keep your vouchers up as high numbers, right?
We, if we invest now, we get more money next year. And so, the way that the federal government does its funding, that these dollars would count as if they were federal dollars this year, and so it's possible that no, that it may only be a one or two-time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further discussion? Vicki, would you call the roll, please?
Everett?
Yes.
Campbell?
No.
Wayland?
Yes.
Bro.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Well, you can buy easy. Sorry. I'm the new boy on the board.
Is there economic development?
Thank you, guys.
Anything further? It's a good order, gentlemen.
Oh, yeah.
No, I did not. I did not.
I wanted to comment about the loss of Vijay Sethi and what he has meant to Clay County. We certainly wouldn't be in the kind of good position we are in many fronts without Vijay's dedicated work over the years. And as I told his wife on Sunday, when we visited with her, that Vijay had a way of making us look good. And we probably would not be seen in as favorable a light by the citizens if it wasn't for the hard work that Vijay did for us and so on. So I just want to acknowledge that we'll be going to his funeral today. I'm going to be, some of us are also going to be going to the Hindu service that we'll be following at the nursing home, nursing home at the funeral home. And it's, even though we won't know what's going on at that service, I think it's in tribute to him, I'd like to observe it as well. One of the things that Mary Claire told me on Sunday was that the priest that's going to be doing the service said that as a non-Catholic participant in their service, that he was a greater involvement than most of their parishioners. He volunteered for everything, he worshiped regularly with the family and so on, but he maintained his Hindu traditions as well. And in the, for those of you who were at the funeral visitation thing yesterday and saw the brochure ready, there's a picture of Vijay in meditation at the lake. And I think that that's the Hindu tradition of meditation and so on is well typified by his, by that picture. And I just want to acknowledge with gratitude for his life and that we will be celebrating that life today.